Good afternoon. Everybody hear me okay?
Raise it up.
Raise it up, raise it up, raise it up. A little better? Okay, good, good. Unfortunately, Channel 971 is not working very well right now, so for those of you at home waiting to see this, good luck. We will record it and replay it later today, so you will be able to see it if you want to see it again later. For those at home that didn't make it today this afternoon will be able to see it later as well. If you were here last week, you know I'm the guy that kind of likes to walk around and talk, but we found out that because of that, the microphones we're using and everything else, that the sound was not coming through for those folks at home. So as they told me, I'm nailed to the podium here, it cannot move, but I'll try and still talk a little bit, okay, and have that. A little different scenario this week. I invited all the directors to come and do a real quick presentation on their departments and what's happening in their departments to give you some more information. As I bring each one up, I'll also ask them to reintroduce themselves to you as well, because we may have some new people in the audience, and with COVID and the way things have happened the past couple of years, we may not have been in close contact. Actually, I'll put a name to a face to do that as well. A lot of things have happened in the past week. Number one, who of you are staunch college football fans? Okay, not too many, okay, well. We're kind of in mourning because the Big Ten came up with a big zero. Even though Michigan's not my team, I was kind of rooting for them, but they didn't do it. Ohio State is my wife's team, and she's rooting for them, and that came down to what like the last three or four seconds or whatever it was when they kicked the field goal, Georgia won. To do that. Those of you who were not here last week, I'm Jeff Hagan, I'm the interim executive director. We'll be here during the timeframe that Dan Nyman and Chris Henderson take to complete a search, a nationwide search, looking for a new leader to come in to be executive director for a year ago. I've come with 24 years' experience. I retired from the old Camden University of Florida in May of 2020, took some time off, and then got into the interim role that I do here. I have done this, my fourth one, I did one Lakewood community, which is not too far from here. I did one that Windsor made, which is your sister community. We just finished one in Vincent Hall up in McLean, Virginia. And then as I was wrapping up that one and thinking I had some time off, Dan Nyman gave me a call and says, the old question that you always, sometimes you want to hear, sometimes you don't. So what are you doing, Jeff? So we talked about it, and my wife and I decided that we'd do this. It's kind of the shoulder season of the year. We live in Florida in the wintertime, in Michigan in the summertime. Summertime is where our grandkids or our children are, so we said we'll do this to make sure, take the summer off, so we'll do that too as well. If you saw, I think Chris did a presentation a little while ago, and mentioned the fact that I was coming and that my wife is coming as well. She's with us today. Patty, would you like to stand up and just wave to me, Dan, my wife Patty? We come as a little tag team that gives us opportunity to visit different parts of the country, as well as we still stay in contact with each other, which is very beneficial from a relationship perspective, which we all relate to that. It's a good thing to do that. Real quick, I mentioned that I'm the interim person here. The search is in process. We are working with an organization called the Deffett Group. Dan Deffett will be on site on January 12th to meet with the leadership team, and I believe with other members of the search committee as well, and to my understanding, some residents will be involved with that as well. So those folks will have a chance to meet with Dan and express their interest in what we're looking for, for a new leader, and going forward from that as well, at some January 12th. So that's the exciting part that will kick off the search process really, from our end of it. Dan, I'm sure is already collecting resumes and knowing kind of a sense of what we're looking for here as well. I expect to be here three months, maybe four months, depending on how long it takes to find a new person to step into this role and go forward. I'll be here, and the rest of the meeting as well, and we'll have the leadership team come up and kind of keep an update of what's happening in their departments as well. Real quick though, we do know we have a new marketing director starting next week, her name is Heather Scott. I do not know anything about her background, but she's excited to come on board, and I'm looking, I met her once, and she's looking forward to coming and meeting you, meeting the rest of the leadership team, and everybody else to get her process moving too. Florence, I'm gonna let her kick it off here, and she's an exciting lady. Her background has just amazed me, what she's done. So I'm gonna ask her to introduce herself, and then just kind of give us a brief idea of what's happening in your neighborhood.
Great. Hey, everybody! Woo! It's a great day. It's so good to see you all. I'm Florence Brooks, Director of Lifestyles and Wellness. I just celebrated eight years at Cedarfield. I came here eight years ago as a staff chaplain, and then two years ago moved into the role as Director of Lifestyles and Wellness. What I want you to know today, just to put a good one on the same page, is that lifestyles and wellness is four primary areas. That is the concierge and transportation services, that is pastoral services, the clinic and social workers, and pathways to wellness, and all the programming and trips that take place. So with that in mind, I want to share with you one thing for each of those areas. The news with our ancillary services, concierge services and transportation, which I hope you already know, is that Barbara Brown has come on board as our new manager in that area. She is in the office that Ancillary Services has been using for the last almost two years. If you haven't gone by to say hello to her, dude, she really is appreciating people saying hello and enjoying the opportunity to get to know people. I had shared through a memo a week or so ago that I expected by the first of the year that we would have at least four drivers operating full-time, but two of those drivers are out sick, so we're still with a lean team. But that's life, isn't it? The second thing I want to share is about pastoral services, under the management of Trish Carter, our chaplain manager at Market Ernestus, our administrative assistant. We are looking, actively looking for a staff chaplain to join that team. We have not found someone yet. That process just reopened, so we're just beginning that surge again. So Trish's time is concentrated primarily on worship and working with residents who are at the end of life. We're really, really excited to share that our worship participation, which has slowly built back up, and we're real excited to have like in the seventies, a participation on Sunday mornings in worship here, and really encourage and invite anyone that would like to join us to do so. Our next area is our clinic and social work. Of course, the clinic has been really busy this last week with lots of people coming in for COVID testing and trying to get clarity about whether or not they have COVID, or if they've been exposed to COVID, or what that means. And as Ann likes to say, you're, there's no concerns until you test positive. And so you're not positive until you test positive. So all the cautions and things don't come into effect until you test positive. Remember that your social workers are your starting point for questions about the continuum and for services available to you as independent living residents. I see Kathy and Lynette are sitting in the back of the room, Kathy Reich and Lynette Murphy. Please don't hesitate to reach out to one of them with any questions about the continuum and services that you might have access to assist you while you are an independent living. The fourth area is pathways to wellness. Hopefully you all have seen your January informer and the abundance of opportunities. You may know that there's a pre-registration opportunity for a lot of, a lot of events. We had 115 people pre-register for events in January and are looking forward to participation across the board for a variety of activities and trips. We're real excited about all the offerings that are available. On Monday, a group, was it Monday or yesterday? Yesterday, a group got together to look at more specifically programming for the next six months to a year out and talk in more detail about that. So just know that the wheels are always turning in the background to provide those opportunities that keep life rich and full for you here at Cedarfield. So I have one more thing I want to share. This is a quote by Buckminster Fuller. Never forget that you are one of a kind. Never forget that if there weren't any need for you in all your uniqueness to be on this earth, you wouldn't be here in the first place. And never forget, no matter how overwhelming life's challenges and problems seem to be, that one person can make a difference in the world. In fact, it is always because of one person that all the changes that matter in the world come about. So be that one person. Thank you.
You can cheer, that's good. It's always nice to start off with somebody who's got a lot of life. You mentioned transportation is challenging right now. What can I do as a resident to help you schedule to make sure I get to my appointments on time?
Sure, that's a great question. I was in the office today when a call came in, and I thought it was handled so thoughtfully. Someone came, called in for transportation for tomorrow, and they were able to book it. They looked at the schedule, they were able to book it, and then they said, moving forward would be great if you could give us 48 hours notice. So just know, the more planning and preparation you can do, the better. And we are able to pull in people to assist as we work through the lean times. So above all, patience and appreciation really go along with.
Thank you. That's Florence. Okay, when I put this out to Eleanor yesterday on my way back from Florida to half the town hall today to continue doing it, I also asked, I asked the directors to do this. And she mentioned that there might be a couple of directors who might be just a little bit nervous about standing in front of the crowd. So with that, I've noticed this lady up front here, her knee is just going. I think she might be a little bit nervous, so would you be, help give me a round of warm and welcome to Sharon.
Good afternoon, all. I'm gonna see if I can talk for her. Hello, see the fear, like I'm trying to talk her. Excuse me. Well, for the update that I have for you all, we have one position open for house, for the housekeeper, and hopefully we can fill that position within a week or two. And also, we are working on the carpets over the independent living, trying to get all the halls done as soon as possible. We get into it, but it's gonna take maybe more than a week or so. They're not housekeepers, but we're doing the best that we can. And also, we are in the process of working on all the carpets on the independent living on outside portions. We get ready, do the carpets and try and get it touched up and getting ready for the sweep. And that's all I have for right now, and thank you. That will do it.
So surprised you could get away without me asking a question, right?
We're about to go.
Yeah? Over the years, my wife and I have brought in housekeepers to help us keep our house clean too. The first time we did that, I didn't understand the process. I just thought they'd come and take care of the whole ball of wax. Well, my wife educated me real quickly that I'm not gonna pick up my dirty socks, I'm not gonna put my books away, I'm not gonna do this and that and other thing. Is that something we can do to help your team too, to make sure before they come in to clean that we kind of tidy it up a little bit?
Well, well, not really. Only thing that we asked there, if we do change your linen on your bed, to make sure you have a mouth, so we don't have to go through your personal things, you're looking for your linen. And then when we do, I'm sorry, if you do change your own bed, please fill out the slip and let us know what you put in that bag, because some get some iron that's not even in the bag, we don't get a sheet in there, and we have to figure out who belongs to what. That's the only thing, and we do the rest.
Didn't she do great? Good, good. Okay, hey, just sitting right up front here, we're talking about some food.
Did I bring samples?
Did I bring samples? That'd be good, wouldn't it? So, good afternoon, everybody, I'm David Stewart. For those of you who don't know me, I came with the building, so, thank you. I'm here. So I've been here 26 years, six months, and one day. And you can all be very proud to know that Cedarfield was the first community in the country to put restaurants in the retirement community. We invented that, so all the rest of the places you've been are just followers. I grew up in Michigan, M. Go Blue. There you go. We are taught as children to hate everything about Ohio, so every time we drive through Ohio with a Michigan license plate, we get pulled over. They'll pull you over for one mile over. You're going 56 miles an hour, they'll pull you over. So anyway, we haven't beat Ohio State in more years than I can even remember, so this year was a good year, I'm sorry. Yeah, but actually, I grew up with everybody saying, you know, oh, Michigan, Michigan, Michigan. So I started rooting for Sparty, Michigan State, when I was young, just to make all of them mad, so anyway. A few dining updates. I want you to all be very proud about another fact, and that is, we are doing very well on staffing and dining. We have a few openings, but we're doing quite well. When we're fully staffed, depending on how many full-time, part-time we have, we have over 90 people that are dining. So we only have a few openings, and that's pretty remarkable on behalf of the team at Pinnacle Living. We have people that corporate who help with the posting the ads, and then HR is always at our ready to help us. I don't know if you've heard this, Virginia is what's called a severe state, which means there's only 40 candidates for every 100 openings. So we're fishing in a very shallow pond. Other states like, I don't know why, but Maryland, there's 80 people for every 100 openings. We only have 40. So the fact that Cedarfield is continuing to operate and doing as well as we are is something to be really proud of. So, part of the problem with getting a lot of new people in, they're bright, they're shiny, and they don't know anything. So we have a lot of training to do. Most of our battery, as we call it, the cooks who prepare your food, they'll order each evening, they need to be trained in what our recipes are and how we work. Our servers, we recognized some things this week that are almost funny, is our servers don't know what petite delectables are. So when somebody orders a petite delectable dessert, the server doesn't even know what that is. We have a lot of training to do, so y'all are so wonderful to them, they love working here, they talk about how nice the residents are, so thank you for your patience in that regard. We're aware of where we need to go next with these people. So we'll talk a little bit about the industry, specifically about food. You said I had 20 minutes?
Two.
Two.
Damn.
So, when COVID began, and you probably don't know all, a lot of this, but I want to say it anyway, the world shut down. Restaurants shut down, our food distributors struggled to stay open, and so the market has been really upside down for a while. And one of the biggest things we're facing right now is beef. For chicken farms to catch up, it's a really short cycle. For other industries, it's a short cycle. The beef industry is a really long cycle. So how many people watch Yellowstone? Oh, you know farm. How many people have visualizations of these big ranches with thousands of head of cattle? Yeah? Okay, well, we'll go, we'll go with yes on that. Ninety percent, 97% of farms are family-owned, with an average age of 58 years as the farm owner, with an average number of cattle of 40. So when you drive down the road and you see some cows out in the field, that's your average cattle farm. So when COVID struck, and the restaurants shut down, and the industry came go screeching home, these farmers had to sell their cattle. They didn't have any place to, to put them, there was no market, so they, what they called culled their cattle, they just got rid of them. A lot of farms went out of business. A lot of farmers kept a few cows, and now they're trying to build their herds back up. There's not enough cattle, they call it on, I think they call it on hoof or something, there's not enough cattle standing around right now. There's still a lot of factories that are closed. So the supply chain and the pricing in beef is really difficult right now. It will recover, but it's gonna take a while. There's a lot of people who closed their farms, sold their cattle, and they're not gonna do it again. They've retired, so. We're working through all of these supply chain issues. You know, last year, late in the year, poultry went wild because of avian flu, so we're working through all of these issues, supply chain and pricing. We do have a budget we need to hit, and we try real hard to hit that, because that's your money. So, thank you for your patience, I thought you'd like to hear a little bit about the beef market, because I can tell you, when I was educated on this, I had no idea that the, the guy just up the road was the average cattle farmer and not some 10,000-head ranch. So anyway, I think my time's up. You got a question?
No.
No question for you. A comment. What we learned when we moved to Florida six years ago is Florida is a large cattle state. It's just amazing, you drive around, and every back road you go down, there's 40, 40 head of cattle here, 50 head of cattle there, and they're all over the place, so it's pretty amazing to do that. Thanks, David. Let's see, we've got Stephanie here, Stephanie, there she is, yes. We have to hire people, and so she does a good job. While she's on her way up here, I have to let you know, your leg is not bouncing like it was a little while ago, Sharon, so.
I'm good, yeah.
She's calm, now, she's good.
I'm happy.
Hello, everyone. I'm Stephanie Merkham, I'm the Human Resources Director at Cedarfield. I know I'm everyone's hot topic about recruitment, retention, because everybody's probably gonna mention it here today. Just kind of, we are currently, there's two people in Human Resources right now, it's Bridgette and myself, and then of course, we have Madison, who is, the Interim Office is loaning to us temporarily to help us fill our open positions. So we are, she's a big help to us right now. She's helping Health Services with interviewing and helping, helping us recruit. She's also doing touch bases on 30 days, 60 days, and 90 days to make sure we are retaining our team members, so that it's not a cycle of in and out. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what we had last week for general orientation attendees. We had two part-time CNAs, one PRN, LPN, a PRN team member works as needed, so if we need them and they're available, then they'll come into work as scheduled. One part-time kitchen assistant in garden room. This week, we have a large number of Health Services staff, we have one part-time RN supervisor, one full-time LPN, one PRN LPN, and then of course, two part-time CNAs. We hired this week so far, we've hired one part-time lifestyle assistance for Health Services, one full-time cook, household and neighborhood cook for Magnolia Meadows, and then of course, we have a couple offers out, one to a housekeeper, and then one to a CNA and one to a nurse, so that's kind of where we're at this week. And then currently, we currently have a total of 34 openings. Of those, 18 are full-time, and then 16 are part-time, and that's for the entire community. Questions?
I'll just see if my phone can get questions. Okay, thanks, Stephanie. Does she appear nervous?
No.
Her knees were just bouncing off the wall back here. But she did great, she did wonderful, appreciate it. Let's see, what can I, hit you with? The, all the new orientees that come through each week, do they, what do they tell us about why they chose to work here?
A lot of times, it's our reputation, and then of course, also best workplaces to work, I get that a lot. So they're definitely, they're doing research on communities that they're coming to work at, so it's, it's helpful to have that positive reputation out there.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you have grandkids in the neighborhood looking for a job? No? Adopt one. We need some help. We're doing really good, though, I think, Stephanie, thank you for the update, appreciate that. Okay, Allison's sitting up front here, she's not nervous, she's used to talking in front of huge crowds.
Happy New Year, everybody. My name's Allison Zach, I'm the Director of Philanthropy here at Cedarfield, and next week, I will be celebrating my third year here, so I'm excited to have made it for three years. Right now, I want to give you just a quick update on a couple of projects I'm working on. The big one we've finished up is the Secret Garden, and that's the renovated space that is surrounded by the new household building, and then the three sides of assisted living and healthcare. And we're very grateful to many donors who have stepped up. We've received $80,000 in gifts, and the garden has started. If you haven't had a chance to get out there, you'll see, you would see trees and beds, and everything is starting to get prepped, so for springtime, we'll be able to get that garden up and running for you. We hope to have a big garden party in April and celebrate that, and celebrate all the donors who contributed to it. The garden will not only be beautiful from the ground, but it's also designed by Beth Burrell to be beautiful from the rooms looking down, so hopefully everyone will find something beautiful in this, in this new space. So again, thank you very much for your support. A couple things that are coming up in February, that's the month that we do a campaign, the Religious Life Committee, along with philanthropy and the chaplain's office, do a campaign to support the Angel Fund. And to remind you, the Angel Fund is the support that we provide to team members who may find themselves in a crisis or emergency and might need a little bit of financial assistance. So look in your mailboxes in February, you'll hear more about it then, but that is coming up. In March, on March 21st, we'll be hosting a local attorney from Armstrong, Bristow, somebody and somebody in Schwartzchild, a local Richmond firm. They will have an estate attorney who will be here doing a planning workshop about how to incorporate charitable giving into your estate plans, so stay tuned for that. And finally, as we start the new year, I wanted to share a little bit of an update on how we did this past year in fundraising. Usually, you know, Pinnacle's got the May 31st to, June 1st to May 31st fiscal year, but I know a lot of you work still on the annual calendar that we have. And so I wanted to share with you, in the calendar year of 2022, taking out estate gifts, residents and family members donated $300,000 this year to Cedarfield projects like the Secret Garden and to our many funds. 2021, we raised $217,000, that was our anniversary year, but 2022 represents a 40% increase in our fundraising efforts, so I want to thank all of you for that. It's, it's thanks to your generosity and your interest that, that we're able to do these kinds of things for our team members and for our community, so thank you. And then finally, I'm always available to meet with you to talk about how you might want to invest in Cedarfield's charitable mission. My office is located next to Jeff's in the administration suite, and I look forward to talking to you. Thank you.
A lot of us think that to make a donation through Fund Development, philanthropy, it has to be one of those $5,000 or $10,000 gifts. What's the average?
I don't know if I can come up with an average without running it on our little donor database, but I would say I see checks from $50 to $50,000, and every little bit helps. There's no check that's too small. What it is, is about giving and the joy of giving, and so, you know, if you want to participate in these programs, they're here for you to, to support, and I hope you find joy in those.
Yes.
Can you make a donation to the Angel Fund in memory of a deceased resident, and will their family be notified?
Question was, can you make a donation to the Angel Fund in memory of a family member or resident?
A deceased resident.
Resident.
And will their family be notified?
Yes, we do have an honorarium program, so if residents want to honor someone who's passed away, or honor someone who's done something special, we do have a lot of residents So if residents want to honor someone who's passed away or honor someone who's done something special, we do have a lot of residents who recognize each other by making donations. Then a card is sent to the family or the card is sent to the person that the gift has been made in honor of, of which, you know what I mean? But yes, the answer is yes. And that's a wonderful way to, um, remember someone and let their family know that that person was special. So thank you.
We'll take it. Any way you can give it. David, there's this guy. Everybody knows the guy with the money, right?
I'm David Taylor. I started in April. When I came through the gate, they said, "You're the money man." I didn't know what that meant. I didn't know what that meant at first, to be the money man. No idea. Um, we sent out, you're familiar with the residents? We sent out, can you hear me now? Okay. We sent out the billing to everyone. We also received the billing for all the work that's going around at Cedarfield. Uh, we're responsible, we have two people in the business office, uh, myself and Sissy. We have two other people that report to the business office, Benji and Andy. Benji does shipping and receiving for the supplies that we receive here at Cedarfield. And most of you are familiar with Andy and the gift shop. Um, part of, um, the business office is, it's tax season now, almost. We've gotten a few calls about our medical tax deduction letters. Um, if you're not familiar with it, this is my first year in putting it together, so I've been looking at last year's. Um, Pam Watson, who used to be, um, in Sissy's position, will be coming in Friday, and we're gonna get the ball rolling. Pinnacle is also working with, um, our outside auditors in order to put the ledger together to give everyone guidance. Um, if you haven't seen it before, um, it will come, Pinnacle letting medical expense deduction information. Uh, the attached letter from the accounting firm, Brown Edwards, contains medical expense deduction information, which may be helpful for you in preparing your income tax return. And it goes on for another couple pages. Um, and then it gives a summary of expenses that you guys have paid, um, throughout the year. And then it tells you which of those are deductible. Um, we are targeting for the same period last year to get this done, um, by February third. Um, which some people think is a little late, but it's, it's a, it's a bit of a challenge to get it together and to make sure that it's accurate for everyone. Um, and that's pretty much the updates we have for the business office. Any questions? No? All right, thank you.
I have no questions either, I don't know. That's good. Okay, we're almost, almost done. We saved the last, the best for last. Um, Lacey gave me a tour last week around the building. And I said, "Show me the good, the bad, the ugly." You know, a lot of fantastic places at the height of this building. It's unbelievable what's downstairs in this place. So it's been amazing to see what he has, what his team has done, what they want to do in the future. I know what he's done so far has been, it's amazing, too. Um, I came into work Friday and I had, on my desk, I keep a little notepad kind of a deal. And I looked like it had some drips on it. And sure enough, there's a leak about there. And we came in today and, you know, you find one leak and you go, "Okay, this is done." Nope, there's another leak. And then another leak. And I think he found three, three or four leaks in my office. So it's good. Well, Lacey's here to talk about what's happening underneath your feet.
All right, uh, thank you. My name's Lacey, so I've been here just over nine months. So hopefully, I'm getting, you know, being able to meet just about everybody, trying to, so it may take time. Um, Jeff asked me to talk a little bit today about what's going on with the maintenance department. I could probably talk for an hour on, um, everything we have going on. But, um, I'll just hit on the highlights just to kind of let everybody know what's going on. I ran a report this morning. Uh, we had a total work orders that were received in the month of December, twelve hundred and, excuse me, twelve hundred and fifty work orders that we've received in the month of December. And we were able to complete eleven hundred ninety-eight work orders. Um, that's pretty good for ten guys. You know, it's ten maintenance guys completing everything, so. The, um, our goal, uh, which we kind of said, which I think is a little, it's going to, we may need a little bit more staff. But our goal is to get to complete every work order within two days. Um, of the eleven hundred ninety-eight work orders, sixty-seven percent were completed within two days. So we're, we're getting there. We're, we're showing improvement. Uh, the one thing I do want to mention about that is we, we still are finding some workers, work orders are slipping through the cracks. So if, if you've submitted a work order and within a week you haven't heard anything, call us back so we can really follow up on it. I ran into that actually this afternoon where something just fell through the cracks and we weren't able to get to it. So, um, we do want to hear, hear back from you if you're not, if we're not getting there fast enough. Um, a couple, another item that I've come up, I've been here long enough to see the lay of the land and see where we definitely need improvement. Um, we have a plan, we met with the contractor today to try to speed up the refresh process. So, uh, hopefully, we're gonna catch up. Um, during the COVID years, what I've been told, the refresh has kind of slowed down, if not stopped. We're trying to get that back up. So hopefully, within the next six to eight months, we'll be caught back up with the refresh program. So, uh, kind of real quick, refresh, when you've been here for ten years, we try to come in and refresh your apartment, your cottage, uh, new carpet, new paint. Um, and we'll, we're gonna send a guy, a team, to kind of come meet with all the residents and, um, it's all in priority order. So we're just going down the list, but we're gonna try to get caught up within the next six to eight months. Um, that's what the thing for my, for us, kind of a new thing to really try to take care of. Um, really, I, like I said, I could talk for, with our updates every, um, we have a couple constructions still going on at Healthcare. We are, um, we have a contractor selected for the lobby renovation. So we're just working through the contract with the contractor. So hopefully, within a couple of months, that, that project will start. And, um, when Jeff was here last week, I know we talked a little bit, there's questions about the beavers in the pond, so I'll kind of finish with the beavers. Um, we have two beavers in our pond. I've seen one swimming around. I think there's two. Um, they're beginning to be pretty destructive, you know? So it's kind of nice to clear out a little bit around the pond so we can go fishing, but it's not, it's, uh, they're really tearing stuff up. So we met with the contractor. I called, um, Gaveman Inland Fisheries, and they told me that we have two options with beavers on our property. In the state of Virginia, um, it's illegal to relocate a beaver. So we either have to live with them here and protect our trees as best we can, or we have to get rid of them, get, you know, kill them essentially. So, um, we met with the contractor and I've asked him to, if they have any special permits, can they get rid of the beavers off the property and have them living when they leave property? So that's what we're trying to shoot for. He's looking into it now. Um, we met with him, I think it was two weeks ago. It was over the holidays, so I haven't heard back from you. I asked for an update and he's still looking into it. Um, he's a good resource because he's also gonna help, um, help us restock the pond. They, uh, they do that as part of their, um, part of their company. So I think it'll be good. That's one of the things I was looking at doing, trying to bring the fish back so we can go fishing in the pond. So, um, that's a couple of the items I had. Like I said, I could probably talk for a while. I'll stop at the beavers.
So I don't get to get a, a beaver scarf or any of that beaver hat? I like the approach for it. I got it great.
You might get a beaver steak.
Beaver steak. I, I, I did forget a couple folks. Um, I'm still learning how everybody's on my team here. Adrian, come on up. Tell us what's happening over in Healthcare. Um, she's coming back from a little bit of a, a little time away, but she's, uh, hit the ground running this morning and yesterday.
He gets Healthcare today, let's say, for the day next week. Um, so, I'm Adrian, I'm run down the Associate Executive Director, uh, over Healthcare, which includes second floor, which is our member support, uh, Morning Glory. Assistant Living, which is Garden Grove, which is the third floor today. And on the fifth floor, we have Rabbit Lane, which is Healthcare. Fourth floor currently has Park Place, which has just been renovated and opened up for, um, our rehab short-stay residents. And of course, Magnolia Meadow is another long-term. A lot is going on in Healthcare. Thanks to a lot of my teammates. I will start with Stephanie, my, our HR. I have to apologize to her on a daily basis because I swear I call her forty times a day. Um, but we are hiring, we are hiring, as you heard, nurses, aides. Um, speaking with Chris Henderson this morning in our leadership meeting, we got good news that this is the lowest vacancy rate in Health Services in the last eighteen months. So we are going out there, we are recruiting, we're hiring, and have the backing and support of Dan and Chris. As far as market adjustments for our nurses and our aides. And the HR department were processing them yesterday. I'll call her, they'll interview today, people will bring her right down and say, "Hire her now," or "Him now." And they're willing to do that, which is awesome. Um, we are getting ready to switch from, we are a level-three construction. And so what that means is the residents that are currently living upstairs on the fourth floor on the AL side are about to move back downstairs to their apartments. But that being said, Magnolia Meadow, which is, it used to be called South, thank you. The residents that are on South are now gonna move to their forever home on the fourth floor where the residence, fourth floor household right outside my office. And then the residents that are downstairs in the fourth phase, fourth phase of AL will be moving upstairs to the finished and new AL while we finish our construction of phase four. So a lot of moving parts, but with that being done, um, we have Lacey and Sharon, who'll come in and make sure things are up to code and clean so that we move people around. Um, a lot of movement will happen in the end of February. We have about two weeks to move sixty people and move it where everybody's happy and healthy and content. So that means long days and a lot of ups and downs, and can we carry that for you? But we'll get it done like we always do. Um, we are in Medicare certification, if you have not heard about that. Um, and I'm sure everybody has. We're in the process. We're still doing our, our policies, our procedures. We're doing our changes of how we do our policies and procedures. And we are making sure that we are following the regulations and the state laws that govern Medicare. With that, I have a wonderful sidekick. Her name is Tamika, she's my DON. So she helps me make sure that the nurses are doing their part, while my operators are doing what we can do to support the nursing staff. And I think that's enough. I mean, we're working on car, we're, we're, we're working on a lot of things. So if you ever see me and you have a question, just come back and ask me a question at the moment. I'm sure I'm forgetting about a million things right now. So, any questions for me?
Uh, not, not a question, but interesting when she's talking about people going from here to there to here. Who remembers that old thing, you know, who's on first? That's what I'm going through my brain going, "Oh, my gosh, how does she keep track of who's going where and when they gotta be there and everything else?" Tamika, did you want to say that?
Sure.
Come on up.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Tamika Ross, the Director of Nursing. Um, I am the Director of Nursing for Health Services, Assistant Living, and Memory Care. I work with a dynamic team. I have five clinical leaders that help. We work together every day, um, to do the day-to-day processes that we have to do. Just like Adrian said, um, our number one thing right now is Medicare certification. So we're working to make sure that we are meeting all of the regulations on a day-to-day basis. And, um, that's fun. It's, it's a whole lot of fun in Healthcare right now. But, um, working with the great team that we have, um, we get it done. Um, we also, um, I'm kind of like piggybacking on what Adrian said because we kind of work together every single day. And, um, so, um, recruitment and Medicare certification is our number one priority right now. So we're working with that every single day. Um, I'm blessed to have, um, all of my clinical leaders in place. I am interim infection control nurse right now because that position is open. Um, so I'm, we're currently recruiting for that as well. So I'm taking care of COVID and infection control over on the Health Services side. Um, but we, but we've done pretty well. We've had a few outbreaks recently, but I guess that was to be expected with the holidays and families coming in and visitation and things like that. But, um, I will say that it's just been cold symptoms. We haven't had to send anybody to the hospital, um, and they're not, um, getting as ill as, you know, in past years. So just some sniffles. We rarely get a fever at this point, but we got, we, we have those things under control at this time. So, um, I think we're getting to a place where we're definitely progressing and things are getting better. Um, so that's all I have. Do you all have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
I see some other team members in the back. Any comments from those folks? No, no comments? Okay. Um, you heard Tamika mention COVID. It's kind of hurt his ugly head again. Um, and I can attest to other communities who've been at, it's a similar situation. So from my perspective, I would reinforce the thought of what we did in the past. Uh, make sure you're washing your hands, using sanitizer. Um, if you feel a slight bit not well, get yourself checked to make sure you're, you know, manage your, your situation should it turn into something worse, to do that, to just keep that in mind as well. Um, I would, uh, say hi to everybody if I could read your name tag. Oh, I don't see any name tags. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven out of a hundred. Hmm. You know me, right? You know my name, yeah, without me putting this on, right? So please, do me a favor. I would love to address you in a more personal manner than, "What's your name? I can't remember." So if you wear your name tag, it helps me, it also helps the new folks moving in as well. They are coming into a situation where they may not know anybody or they know very few, but they want to get activated and get to know people as well. So it's easier for them to say hi to Mary or Sue as opposed to always having to ask them, "What's your name?" So please remember to, try and remember to wear your name tag when you're out of your apartment. I realize when you're inside your apartment, it doesn't matter unless your husband can't even remember your name. There's not going to be a situation yet to do it differently, but that's, that's, yeah. Any questions for me or the other directors who are here today as well? I see you right there. She has a microphone for you.
Regarding name tags, when we moved in almost four months ago, we were told they were no longer being issued.
Okay. That's why you don't wear them then, I guess. Anything we can add to that, or?
I ran into a new resident in the hallway this morning and she said to me, "I wasn't given a name tag." So I went to the name tag producer and said, "This person needs a name tag." So look, if you will contact marketing and let the man who needs a name tag, they'll pick you up.
Would you like a name tag? Okay, good. So if you do not have one, if you put it in the drawer and it kind of got buried underneath the stuff and you would like a new one? Talk to Eleanor? No? Talk to marketing? Talk to marketing? Okay, talk to marketing.
You can call Eleanor. I'm just gonna turn around and talk to marketing. Thank you.
Okay, that'd be good. Other questions? Wait, wait for the microphone. Hold on. Thank you.
I saw your barter use, um, my stepson one today. It was a little late. And nothing came over. Countdown, there were everything was in a blue screen. And not, not, mine on the media.
Um, you weren't here for the first part. We, we know we're experiencing technical difficulties, so this is being recorded and it's going to be replayed later today. So is there a way to get that out to people so they know it's gonna be replayed?
Yeah, we can put it on a slide.
Okay, great. So I apologize for that, but the intent is to get it out there so people can get caught up as well. Other questions? Did you learn anything today?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm glad you came. Um, enjoy the rest of the day, the rest of the week, and hopefully, the weather will stay warm for a little while. Thank you.